Happy Friday, everybody. It is Friday night, so you know where I am. I'm not at my vanity anymore. Actually, I'm in a new location. And so I am so happy to welcome to Politics and Prosecco, at-large city council candidate Ruthie. And how do I pronounce your last name?
It's Louis Jean. So a tutorial is your Louis Vuitton bag and your friend Jen. You put them together. That's my last name, Louis Jean.
Listen, I'm all for like, let's celebrate a little bit of luxury every now and then. I'm fine with that. Um, so I'm so thrilled to have you here. Please tell the audience who you are. But first, because it's Politics and Prosecco, we have to know what you're sipping on.
Okay, I'm not sipping on a lot because, you know, got a lot going on. But a few weeks ago, I stopped by Urban Grape in the South End.
Love that place. Thank you for shouting them out. Yes.
TJ over there at Urban Grape, and I bought this wine, which is a Chardonnay from House of Brown. I don't know if you can see the label.
I love that.
But it's the first black-owned wine estate in California. They sell it over at Urban Grape in the South End, a black-owned wine store. So yeah, and I'm sipping on a little bit of that tonight. So.
So happy. Okay, so I, Urban, uh, the Urban Grape also carries the McBride sisters.
Oh, yes. Yep, yep.
Yeah, so I have been there to sip on them. But tonight, um, it's been a hell of a week. I've been battling allergies for like the last three weeks. And finally, I went to an allergist this morning. And basically, he told me to get my life together. And he's like, you can't drink wine because wine is actually a big histamine. So I'm drinking vodka tonight, folks. Vodka and cranberry juice.
And taking antihistamine, and then you're fine, right?
I'm knocked out for the rest of the night. Yeah. But so why don't you go ahead and tell everybody who you are?
Awesome. Thanks so much.
For those who don't know you very well.
Thanks so much, Jax. So hello, everyone. Um, my name is Ruthie Louis Jean, and I am running for Boston City Council at large. Um, I am the daughter of Haitian immigrants who came here. Typical immigrant story with nothing but a sense of the American dream, um, looking to make a better life for themselves and for me and my three sisters. Um, and so I grew up, born and raised here in Mattapan in Hyde Park. Um, graduate of Boston Public Schools. Uh, shout out to the Taylor in Mattapan, the McCormick in Dorchester and Boston Latin School. Um, I grew up in a neighborhood in Mattapan where it's a diverse neighborhood, on a diverse street of immigrants and African Americans and Irish Americans, Polish Americans, just this. Uh, so I grew up with this understanding early on that Boston is a city of working-class families of all colors, just trying to make it. And a city that can often be hard for working-class families, right? And so that is, that is, that is a little bit about my background growing up. Um, I spent some time at the libraries at Boston Public, at my Lower Mills Library. They were my second babysitters when my parents were working there. Overtime shifts and double shifts. So, um, I care a lot about social infrastructure, about our schools, about our libraries. Um, I'm running for, for office. I'm running for Boston City Council at large because I understand that there is an urgency to the moment that we're in as we're coming out of this pandemic. And we're thinking about issues of equity, right? Everyone's using equity now. Um, folks have different definitions of what that means. So we need to be grounded, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And so we need to be grounded in an understanding of what equity is to make sure we're all working off of the same page in terms of how we need to move forward, right? Equity being rooted in, in, in history, right? We need to be ground ourselves in the practices of this, of this city um, in, 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 um, in partnership with the private market that really helped to create these segregated neighborhoods that we have that in so many ways prevented wealth building in black communities and communities of color that have stifled the, the wealth and progression of all working-class families in this city. So when we're talking about equity and when it comes to housing, when it comes to education, when it comes to smaller local businesses, we need that historical framework and understanding of intentional practices in both, on both the government and, and the private market to understand where we need to go and how we need to create intentional policies to counteract those historic inequities. So I'm running because I have the passion, skill, and experience as an attorney, um, as an advocate, uh, who's represented folks facing eviction and foreclosure, who cares deeply about first-generation homeownership and have been working on such projects. Um, and as a, and is a proud product of public schools to, to ensure that we have equity and excellence in all of our schools. So that's all in show about me and, and what I'm about. Um, uh, hopefully that, that helps to set the table.
So why at large? Why not? Is, if you're so focused on, on your area that you grew up in, why at large?
Oh, I'm focused on the entire city. I care about, so I grew up in Mattapan, live in Hyde Park now.
Oh, from Hyde Park?
Hello, Hyde Park, stand up. Yeah. Um, I, my vision is a vision for this entire city. If you talk to folks in Mattapan, if you talk to folks in East D, if you talk to folks in South D, the number one concern is going to be that this city is becoming unaffordable for working-class families, for, for my, for folks who are like, my kids can't even afford to buy here, right? Um, and so my vision for this city and my experience of this city and my work in this city has been citywide. So I'm running citywide because I have worked on these issues citywide. I have served the people of Boston citywide, whether that's representing them in housing court, whether that's my work on behalf of Senator Warren as a top attorney on her presidential campaign, um, and on her, uh, continuing on to her Senate campaign, whether it is, um, delivering food to folks who are suffering from food insecurity, which affects all of our neighborhoods, all 24 of them, you know? Um, my vision is for the entire city.
So let me, let me just back up a little bit, talking about Elizabeth Warren. So as you know, um, in her bid for president, uh, she did not do very well in Massachusetts. And as a matter of fact, she didn't do well in any black precincts. And there is a idea that a lot of people just come around for election time. So how do you plan to use her as sort of a, uh, validator? Especially in a community that does not feel like she shows up on a regular basis in this community?
So what, what I'll say to that is, one of the great reasons and one of the inspirations for working for, um, Senator Warren was the root, when the root was, you know, reviewing every presidential campaign and saying, which candidate is going to be the best on issues of racial justice and equity? That, the first, the, the, the best candidate that they picked was Senator Warren on those issues. When it comes to working on the issues and being grounded in the historic understanding, like I was saying, of, of how we got here and fighting on behalf of the working class. Um, I, you know, that was my inspiration for working for her um, and, and for showing up day in and day out and working and being a face, um, you know, for her camp, for her campaign. So I think, you know, when folks are talking about pushing issues forward that matter most to us, showing, you know, she's a leading, uh, a, a leading voice on student debt cancellation, which is something that, you know, black women earned, earned, uh, college degrees um, uh, as a proportion more than any other demographic and also burdened with student debt. And she shows up very much in that policy discussion, which is important to us and in a lot of policy issues that are important to us in our communities. And I think that having, you know, worked for someone who cares so much about issues that affect working-class families like my own, that affects, you know, sisters and cousins and folks who are really struggling with, um, student loan debt, that to me is, is, is real validation.
Has she endorsed you yet?
Oh, I've been working very closely with her team. I, you know, before this, I was working senior counsel on her campaign. So I very much have her support and the support of the team.
Has she publicly endorsed you yet?
That, those conversations are continuing.
Continuing, okay. So as a staffer, I, I, I understand your coded language here.
Yeah.
Just so you know, like, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, but so that's a very good segue because a lot of people are good on the issues. It's one thing when you're good on the issues. It's totally different when you show up in those neighborhoods and talk to those people. And that is something that a lot of people, electeds, don't do. What do you propose? How do you plan to be very constituent-based? Because that's, that's really a bulk of the work of the city council. It's a very mayor-heavy system.
Yep.
And so the city council, their main job is to be very constituent-focused. What is your plan to stay grounded in constituent services so that you can be an advocate in front of the body so that you can get things done? Because what you don't have access to is legislation. What you don't have the power to do is change legislation. What you do have the power to do is to advocate for change of legislation. So how do you plan to show up and be consistent in communities that are quite frankly underserved and they only see elected officials when they're running?
That's a great question, Jax. Um, the, you know, we do live in a very, this is a very strong mayoral control, uh, city. I, I will say that city council does, you know, have the ability to change zoning codes and to pass ordinances, right? But I actually really love, and I, I'm really happy about this question because I love constituent services. I love meeting people where they are. Um, I used to run an eviction clinic, um, where folks who needed help, you know, we, there were not enough attorneys to represent everyone who's facing eviction. Um, and folks would come to our eviction clinic and we would help them fill out the paperwork to help them preserve their legal rights in court. And instead, um, you know, sometimes folks couldn't come to us, so we would go to them and meet them at their home to help them fill out the paperwork, something I've been doing, um, it, you know, and that I've always cared about is food insecurity. Today, I just did two food deliveries to folks who are suffering from food insecurity. I believe, you know, part of the reason why I'm running is to, how do we show up as good neighbors for each other? And I think that is the constituent services part of the work. Um, it's about, you know, there's a pothole and, and why do we have more potholes and streets that don't get fixed on Blue Hill Ave? Well, like, why don't they have the same issues on Comma? And so I'm, you know, I very much, um, am rooted in a service that looks like, how am I helping you next door? I just put an event on my calendar for Sunday for a woman who has been having her unemployment denied continuously for the last month. And so we're gonna sit down early Sunday morning and go over her appeal to help her make sure that she can get her unemployment benefits, right? This work is, this work is personal. This work is individual. It's about, how do, you know, how do we as city government help people feel less stressed in their life, right? And that is like, you need food, you need a place to live, you need a, a job that pays you a living wage. And when you can't work, how are you making sure that you're getting your benefits, right? It's about the basics and making sure that folks' basic needs are met. So I very much, um, I show up, you know, now as a candidate. I show, I was showing up before I, you know, before I was a candidate, not for the limelight. This is not about me, right? This is about we and how we work together, right? I believe in change coming from the ground up.
I love that. I love that.
How do we work to, like, I, this is what I'm about because it's where I'm from. My parents had to navigate systems and bureaucracies that they didn't understand as English-language learners, right? And so how do we show up for each other? That's what I care about.
So listen, so you know, one of the things that I think I'm starting to move away from is this whole myth of, um, that black Boston is downtrodden and there's, you know, for every, I think it's $250,000 a white household has, $8 for every black household. They're not telling the whole story of black Boston, quite frankly. And I use this example a lot on this show to remind people that they're black people, brown people, Asian people. We are not a monolith. We each have different silos that we're working on. For instance, when we talk about a living wage, my standard of a living wage is vastly different from somebody else, somebody else's living wage. I am single. I have no children. Single as in not married, no children. And so my money stacks differently from somebody who is my age with a husband or a wife and children. So the myth that black Boston has this downtrodden, you know, there's a need for all these handouts instead of handups. I don't understand, like, you know, how the city council plans to move that forward. I'd be interested to hear, when we talk about closing the wealth gap and we're talking about food insecurities. Um, Mattapan is a very good example of being a food desert. So is parts of Hyde Park. I grew up, um, on Ready Ave in Hyde Park, right by Ross Field, right? So our house was the house on the corner. We just sold it. Um, and.
Very close to me. Ross Field is my park, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, before there was a grocery store at the end of the, the street, there wasn't a grocery store. It was like, you know, corner store and then like, went up the street, there was like Harriots and stuff like that. Um, Hyde Park isn't considered a food desert, but if you live in the middle of Hyde Park, which is that Ross Field area.
That, Matt, you know, the closer you get to Mattapan, yep.
It's a total food desert.
Yeah.
Um, so my question is, you know, how do you plan as a city councillor to close or to at least advocate about the wealth gap not being a monolith? That every black person is broke and poor and, you know, has to have, um, you know, groceries delivered? Not everybody's like that. So how do you plan to bridge that conversation about, and then have a real conversation about the wealth gap? Because that story isn't my story. It isn't your story. It isn't, you know, the story of, of, um, my best friend Stephanie Porter. It's not her story. So there are different silos. So I'm asking, as a city councillor, especially a city councillor at large, when you will have the entire city under your realm, how do you plan to, to have that conversation, a real conversation about the differences in the wealth gap?
That's a great question. So let me start off by saying that whenever I say that statistic, right? The median black family in Boston has about $8 of wealth compared to 247,500 for a white family. What I always say is, right after, what I try to say is that, and that number is not a reflection of anyone's dignity or worth, right?
Absolutely not.
Right. Because I sometimes think that folks will conflate the two if you don't follow it up with something like that.
Well, yeah, and people have been able to push the narrative by saying it just as that. But that's why I'm asking, what is the conversation about bridging the different lifestyles of black and brown people in this community?
Right, right. And so I'll, I'll also say that, you know, because of these issues, these historic issues that we've been dealing with for such a long time, right? Like, you know, I, I have had the privilege of going to really good schools. I'm a Harvard-trained lawyer, but my parents are working class. When we're talking about intergenerational wealth, even though, you know, I have, you know, had, had success and careers, you know, career success, I still, the intergenerational wealth looks different for me than it does for someone, you know what I mean? And that, and that difference is captured in those numbers. And so, um, one of the things I care about when I talk about closing the racial wealth gap and the home, it, a lot of it is foundational to homeownership. Homeownership is the way that we build wealth. So how do you help folks with down payment and closing costs? Um, I've been working on that with, um, a nonprofit here that really is laser-focused on our racial justice homeownership vision. Um, and so I do think that, 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 um, that, that is an important conversation for a lot of folks in this city. But there is, you know, folks who, you know, find themselves in the missing middle where, you know, maybe they, they, they don't qualify for these programs because they have an, an, assets and they don't want to qualify, right?
Yeah. So listen, so I just went through this process. I just bought a house in Roxbury.
Yeah.
And I just went through this process of the, let me just say, the mortgage process was the easiest part of this.
Yeah.
Entire damn deal. But that, I think you, you hit on a very good point. If you look at somebody like me, I don't qualify for those programs because of the salary I make. But I still had to scramble to get a down payment, which I had, but I had to dip into my retirement fund. So people aren't really, it's not even just about getting the loan. It's about what do you have in the bank that's gonna be able to allow you to put down a decent down payment? One, so you don't have to pay PMI, because that sucks.
Exactly.
And then secondly, um, that you can put down something so you can afford to have, so you can afford a mortgage, right? You can put down 5%, but that may not be enough to be able to say, okay, I want my mortgage to be under $4,000 or I want it to be under, you know, $2,000, whatever it is that, however you fall in the bracket. So again, that goes back to the question of bridging the racial gap. I don't qualify for those programs, but there's a, there's a darker spot there where it's like, but I would still need assistance for a down payment. I, I got lucky. I, it's just me. So I had a decent savings account. I was able to, to bypass that. But when it came to qualify for those programs, I didn't.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a, there's a missing middle, right? And we in the city of Boston, there's a lot that we need to do to make sure that we are not losing people, right? Because like, you are the perfect kind of person who would, all right, I'm gonna go to another, another city. I'm gonna move to Randolph or Brockton because, you know, it's becoming unaffordable. And I do think that we need to address that missing middle. Um, I really much, I, I very much care about how do we, how do we, uh, become a city that increasingly maintains and retains its talent of color? Uh, how do we foster and create an environment that is, has a, a strong and robust, a black middle class? Um, and, and you do that by creating in part, like, a welcoming environment where folks feel like, you know, this city also belongs to them. Um, one of the things that I've done is I've, I ha, I testified before Boston City Council when me and, and my friends were denied service at a downtown establishment. And I was like, no one should experience this ever again. And so I testified on that experience before Boston City Council, and I didn't stop there. I provided testimony to the Attorney General's Office. A fine was levied against the establishment. Their staff was forced to go into, um, anti-discrimination trainings and they let, and they issued an apology. It's that type of work that we need to make, that I will continue to do. Um, and that we need to make sure that we're doing to foster an environment where, um, you know, we have a thriving middle class that is welcoming to black folks, to BIPOC folks, where we all can, can succeed and thrive.
Yeah. I think, um, you know, I, one of the things that's gonna come up, um, as an at-large city council, we believe in manifesting here at Politics and Prosecco.
Love it, love it.
So when you become a city councilor at large, come on, speak it into existence.
Amen.
Um, you know, one of the things that's gonna come up is the waterfront. That's a big, big issue. And I, I don't necessarily hang out at the waterfront. I don't think it's sexy. I don't think it's fun to be down there. I think it's just a bunch of restaurants all, you know, hopped into one place. You've overpaid for parking. Like, I am not impressed by the waterfront at all. Plus, when you grow up in Boston, you're surrounded by water, so you're like, I can go to, I can go to South Bank and the same experience.
That's so funny. I'm going there after. I'm going to the waterfront after this. For my sister's birthday. It's my sister's birthday and she wants to go down there.
Which restaurant are you going to?
I think, well, first we're going to, and there's an MBLA event down Massachusetts Black Lords that they're doing something at Lonon D.
Oh, that's fun. Okay.
Of, 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 of their celebration. And then I think she's going, she wants to go to Del Frisco's or a restaurant down there.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so like, for instance, so the waterfront issue is gonna come up because it's not very inclusive.
It isn't.
And, and I guess they mean in terms of monetary, but also just the experience. It's not very cultural down there. What, how do you plan to tackle that issue?
Yeah, that's a really great issue. And the Seaport is interesting because there's, it's actually a model, Massport, in terms of, um, the diversity on the supplier side, in terms of getting it up and running. There's actually, it's a model for what we can do to make sure that our own city contracts are going to more, uh, black and Latinx businesses, right? That are only now are getting an embarrassing 1.2% of city contracts, right?
Well, there's a guy running for mayor who was in charge of that, so.
Sip on, sip on your vodka. Yeah. Um, yes, um, but, um, so, I mean, on Sunday, there's an event at Seaport. Black owned Boston is doing an event that's going to expose, an expose of, 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 of black merchants and, and their items. So those movements are happening. It's about continuing to do that. Um, you know, learning, you know, I believe in talking about things, whether it's about our education, our housing, like you were talking about, you know, um, whether it's the black population here in Boston, how do we talk about him from an assets-based approach, right? There's a lot of richness in who we are in this city. Um, um, and, you know, there's a lot of richness in, in black businesses that because, again, of, of how segregated our city can seem and is, um, you don't see that richness. So bring that richness to the Seaport. And then we can talk, and, and then like, that, maybe that will be an avenue for us to establish more permanent businesses owned by, uh, folks of color down at the Seaport.
But also just taking it, I love this conversation. This is so good. But also taking it out of like, why, why do we have to leave our cultural districts to experience that, right? Like, if you look at Roxbury, if you look at Dudley Square, Newbyan Square, whatever.
Yeah.
If you look at that, there's not many black-owned businesses down there. And the few that are there don't own the land that they're on. So there's, there, that's temporary. And I'm wondering how we can recreate the models of like the Seaport in places like Newbyan Square. It takes more than renaming something. It takes more than saying it's necessary to have that when we could be having a discussion of how do we get there? What parameters do we put in place right now as a city council to make that happen? So my question is, what is, what are you going to bring to the city council to make sure that we are recreating places like the Seaport inside of cultural districts? Some, you know, you go to the North End, gorgeous down there. First of all, I love the North End because I love a good cannoli. Um, so like, you go to the North End and it's full of their richness and their culture. Those people actually own the buildings that they either are in or there's a, there's a, a necessity to bring about a cultural effect with their, um, I believe it's the St. Anthony's Parade.
Yep, that's happening. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So you can get all your cannolis. Yes.
That's the only time I actually get fried dough.
Yeah. Um, fried oreo.
We don't really see that, you know, we don't really see that in Roxbury. We don't see that in Mattapan unless it's like the Haitian Day Parade or, you know, we have the Caribbean Carnival that happens once a year. We don't really have a burgeoning, um, cultural livelihood here and people aren't advocating for that.
Yeah. Um, I think that's a great point. I do think that we have pockets in certain neighborhoods. Like I don't, in Hyde Park, right on, on Fairmont Avenue, there's, you know, uh, there, there are shops where you can, you know, buy your hair products, that, you know, all great signs sponsored by Main Streets down, um, down there, um, where you can buy clothing, Dominican restaurants.
We don't own the buildings.
Yeah.
We don't own the buildings. And that's the issue that I have. It's like, you know, I, I just read a book about how, how integration killed the black business. And quite frankly, people of color killed the black business because the moment we can buy white, we did. And we left the black doctors and the black lawyers and the black dry cleaners and the black, you know, restaurants, um, in order to have equality. Um, and it was something that we had to, it was, it was worth the risk. It was worth giving it up. But here we are now, what, 45 years removed from the civil rights movement? Not even. 50 years removed from the civil rights movement? And we've lost our, um, ability to sustain our black dollar.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, like, if that's something you think about. I know we're running short on time, but, you know, as you, as you go out on the trail and you're thinking about small businesses, black, brown, and Asian, how we are doing things to sustain or have sustainability of those businesses long after people like you and I are not here? And, and I don't think that there's an advocate right now in City Hall for that. And I think that that's what's missing. So my hope is that you go up in there with a lot of piss and vinegar and advocate for small businesses the right way, which is to say, we don't have a very good small business plan. And we don't have one that's inclusive. We don't have one that's equitable. And that lays in the hands of everybody on the fifth floor. And I don't care who's in that seat. I don't care if it's a he or a she. I don't care if she's black, brown, blue, or purple. Everybody on the fifth floor is accountable for that. So that is my hope.
Yeah.
You know what she'd like to say?
No, I mean, it, everything you said, I agree. The issue, right? This is why even when you have a burgeoning black middle class, the issue will always be about assets and your intergenerational wealth, right? So like, how are we, owning the land is very important. The land in this country, it's a foundation of wealth and your ability to do more, to borrow against your home, to borrow against, right? And so how do we help people build those assets in terms of, what are we doing to help, to give grants to businesses to be able to own their own building? So I, something that I care deeply about, I care deeply about all of our small and local businesses. That is true. We can do better contracting with all of them. A soft, a particular emphasis on those owned by black and Latinx because of the historical framework that we're operating in, which is why I make it a point. I go to Cafe Juice Up all the time, not only because their juices are good, and that's like in the neighborhood where I grew up, the Mattapan, but also I know that my dollars are going to support a small black-owned business. And so the more that that enters our conscious, and there are so many of them here, right? So how are we supporting our own and how are we supporting, um, so that they can thrive and they can get more assets? And then they can buy another restaurant, you know, and expand.
That's the whole, that's the whole game, right?
Right.
I use my asset to buy another asset.
Yeah.
That's, that's wealth. There's a difference between being hood-rich and then there's a difference between being wealthy.
Yes.
A lot of people have a hood-rich mentality. I want to drive a Lexus right up to the projects that I'm renting in, like.
And cars depreciate. It's the one thing you take them off the lot and it immediately depreciates. So yeah, let's talk about the things that appreciate.
My Jeep cars.
Yeah.
Like, but, but you know, there's, there's, there's part of that is educating our own about financial literacy and financial abilities. Um, because we do have, you know, as much as I love hip-hop, it has given a false sense of wealth when it's, it's not wealthy to have a gold chain around your neck. You cannot trade that in for an asset. So I, I, it's a.
Although I do have a gold chain around my neck, but I do think smartly about assets.
You live in like Eric B. and Rakim.
No, I'm, no, no, I'm, yeah.
Eric B. and Rakim, so my favorite rappers. But, um, but yeah, but you get the idea. So, um, why don't you tell us just in closing how people can find you? How they can help and donate to your campaign? This is your opportunity.
Hi, thanks, Jax. So, um, thanks, everyone, for watching. Again, my name is Ruthie Louis Jean. I'm running to be one of your, uh, at-large Boston city councillors. You can find me at ruthzeforboston.com. That's R-U-T-H-Z-E-E-F-O-R-boston.com. Um, we've hit the ground running. We're doing really great in terms of fundraising. We're the first campaign. Yes, yes, I'm out here. You know, it's about us. It's about us and the momentum that we've been seeing. We're the first candidate to make, um, the ba, the ballot, uh, which was incredibly humbling. We've had a groundswell of volunteers, a lot of support and energy in the Haitian community. We haven't had a Haitian, uh, person in municipal government for some time. I'm really committed to these issues, to our schools. I'm really committed to these issues, to our schools, to affordability and housing, to supporting our small and local businesses, to a green environment, climate justice being racial justice in the prism through which we can achieve a lot of our goals. So find me on social media at Ruthie for Boston, on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, on this movement. There's urgency here, um, and I'm excited. I have the passion, the experience and the depth. Uh, um, and, and I show up and I always show up. Um, um, I, I know, I will lead with kindness, with boldness. And as an attorney, I'm excited to negotiate on behalf of the people of Boston to make sure that our needs are being met and being put first here in the city. So. Ruth Z for Boston.
Excited about your run. And I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, as, as more women of color run, I'm excited to see women of color with substance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Best of luck. Whenever somebody from your team can throw in the comments where they can reach you so our people can see it.
Awesome. I'll do that now.
And I'm so glad you came on. I hope you come back.
All right. Thanks so much, Dax.
Bye. All right, everybody. Our next guest is in the waiting room and I am going to let him in. I'm still suffering a little bit with my allergies, guys, so I'm a little raspy, but I'm gonna keep drinking this vodka. So that's what I'm gonna do. Um, all right. So let's see if he is here. He is here. Hello, Alex Gray.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for coming on Politics and Prosecco.
It's my pleasure. No better way to start the weekend, right?
That, listen, always, always start the weekend here. So listen, we, um, we've heard about you for a little bit. I did my research. And what I want people to know, first of all, we're trying to figure out everyone who's still in this race. And as we, as we count the numbers, there are so many people running. And in the at-large race, there's quite a few people running. So why don't you introduce yourself to the audience? Excuse me, I'm struggling with allergies. Um, so introduce yourself to the audience. Tell them why you're running and what seat you're running for.
No, thank you very much. So my name is Alex Gray. I live in Jamaica Plain with my wife Lauren. I am running for one of the four at-large city council seats. And, you know, I was not born a great listener, but I had to become one when I went blind. You know, when you can't see, you just have to listen, whether you want to succeed in school or work, or just to be a good friend or a family member. And you know, I believe strongly after the past few years, when it feels as though to me, the loudest voice on cable television and the most divisive words on social media drove the day that our world needs leaders that are willing to listen more than we've ever needed. And you know, I've spent my whole career in public service. I started working on issues of housing and homelessness. Worked for the Massachusetts Housing and Shelter Alliance to fight for their Housing First Initiative. And when I was there, I listened. And when I worked for Governor Patrick, I advised him on transportation and public safety at a time when he launched the Fairmount commuter rail line. And I listened. Uh, most recently, I worked for Mayor Walsh. You know, I was so proud to be one of the folks that helped him start the tuition-free community college plan. And again, I listened. So, you know, I would be able to start this job on day one, I believe, because my work has brought me into every neighborhood in the city. But I know that I'll always take the time to listen because when I have the stories that I've heard have made a good policy a better one. So I'll work every day to ensure that stories are hold, are heard at City Hall in particular. You know, a community that I'm a member of, the disability community, which I know has so much to offer, uh, but sometimes gets left out of conversations. Uh, I'd be Boston's first blind city councillor and only one of two in America. So, you know, I believe we have a chance in Boston in the year 2021 to, to lift disability, not as a more important, but not as a less important, but as an equal partner in how we talk about how we're gonna build Boston back. So, I'll spare you the longer version, but that's the, uh, that's my shorter version.
So Alex, as you know, on this show, we get a little shady, but, uh, I, are you, are you drinking something? Lovely. What are you sipping on?
I am, uh, drinking a Dorchester beer. I think it's an IPA.
Shout out Alex Gray, everybody. He came to Politics and Prosecco. Ready? We love it. We love it. Um, so we get a little shady here, but we also ask some questions and it's more conversational.
Sure.
But, you know, there's a lot going on in this, in the city. And there's a lot going on around a lot of the candidates. Recently, what we just saw, um, in the news, uh, Acting Mayor Kim Janey, fired Dennis White, who was the commissioner, um, appointed by Mayor Walsh. And there's a lot of discussion around that because in communities of color, you will, and I'm sure you understand this, there's a lot of mistrust with the police department. And, you know, not having somebody at the helm right now is a little disconcerting to a lot of people. As a city councillor, how do you think this situation should be handled going forward? I'm not asking you what she did was wrong or right. I'm asking, you know, if, because we believe in manifesting on this show, so as a city councillor.
Sure.
What do you think going forward when in talks about who should be commissioner? And how we get to a place where we are being transparent about that? How do you think you would handle that situation?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So I think, um, that obviously there is a court proceeding that will play out in terms of, uh, you know, last I've heard, the judge hadn't decided. But, you know, I think whether, uh, Mr. White will keep his job or not will, will be determined to some degree by that. But, you know, I think moving forward, you know, talking about how we look at policing, uh, moving forward, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, uh, you know, the Office of Police Accountability, you know, that was brought up in the task force. Uh, it seems to me, Stephanie Everett is, is a strong leader for that office. You know, I think a city councillor can certainly play a role in ensuring that that office has the resources that it needs. You know, I think another piece that came out of the task force, uh, recommendations had to do with how we diversify our police force. You know, I think uh, our police, uh, department will only get stronger the more it is reflective of our various neighborhoods and constituencies. And so, you know, within that, there was discussion of using, uh, Boston Public School graduation as a, as sort of a preference. I think that's a, a big step in the right direction because as we all know, you know, the overwhelming amount of Boston Public School graduates are students of color. Uh, so I think that would be a big step in the right direction. And, you know, there's a lot of things, obviously, uh, that could be done. You know, I think when we talk about who's to, to take the helm next with the police department, certainly want to have as, as big of a, a robust of a conversation, you know, certainly considering candidates locally, but also, you know, perhaps it's, there's a, there's a conversation to be had about how we can look to see what other folks are doing in different parts of the country and sort of tap some, some national audience. So.
Certainly, I am of the belief that there should be a nationwide search. I certainly believe that. Um, I'm also speaking as the daughter of a, a retired Boston police officer. Um, this is not new to me. The politics of the BPD are not new to me. Um, but what I do see difference is that people are playing politics with this issue. And this isn't an issue that we should be playing, we shouldn't be dabbling in the political pool with. We need to have a real conversation about who is at the helm and what that would look like, because it's gonna be a trickle-down effect. Whoever the commissioner is, they're gonna put in policies in place so that people feel like they have more of a relationship with the BPD. Dennis White being a black man, or, you know, whomever comes in there, should not matter, in my opinion. It's about the policies that they put in place. And the city council, this is their opportunity to hold the fifth floor accountable when it comes to budgeting, when it comes to who that should look like or what it should be. Those really hard conversations have to happen. And what we see right now is that they're not happy. So as a city councillor, I would encourage you to think about going beyond the politics of it and saying, look, I need to be in the room with the mayor, having real hard conversations about what my constituents of color are talking about and how they feel.
No, it's a great point. And you know, uh, there's, there's largely two concerns that, that come up to me over and over. And I've, I've been in this race, uh, for a while now, so I've had lots of conversations. And like I said, you know, listening has always been sort of the cornerstone of my professional life. And you know, the concerns that come up over and over again are obviously people want accountability. They're concerned when they see what happened to George Floyd and so many others. They're afraid that that could happen to someone they love or in their neighborhood. So they want, you know, accountability for what's done, you know, while folks are on the job. They also want accountability for what police officers do when they're not on the job. So, you know, that's one concern. You know, there are, there is also, you know, concern when I talk to folks about, um, you know, how we talk about it. This often turns into a conversation of sort of defund or to not defund. And, you know, I, I, when I talk to a lot of folks in all neighborhoods, certainly in neighborhoods where crime occurs, there, there is concern about reducing police. But when I talk to folks about some of the specific pieces, you know, whether that's having mental health clinicians take the lead on calls or having social workers be involved, or, you know, whether we move some of the police officers out of schools or replace them with mental health clinicians. I think there's a, there's much more agreement. So, you know, I've certainly, you know, talked to parents, like I said, that are afraid of what hap- might happen to their son or daughter when they interact with the police, but they're also afraid of, you know, not having a response if there's a crime taking place on their block. So it's a complicated issue. People have, you know, mixed feelings. And I think that there's sort of a national tone with the conversation that you have to be on one camp or the other. And my experience is that people are often sort of in the middle, if that makes sense.
No, I think that's, I think that's right. Um, and I think you're spot on. And I think actually, maybe that's the first time I've heard it explained that way. And, and I think that people would appreciate that. So I just had, uh, Ruth Z. Luiz Jean um, on, and she's also running for city council at large. And she and I talked a great deal about housing equity.
Sure.
And, you know, we talked about living wages and, and I gave the example that, you know, people of color are not a monolith um, when it comes to equity or how we live our lifestyles. And so I'm wondering, now that you're running for city council at large, um, what are your thoughts on housing equity? What do you see the future of Boston's housing? Because we're in a housing crisis right now. You know, what do you see going forward?
So I, I think there's a few things, right? I think we want to double down on the things that are working well. You know, I think the, the program that was rolled out fairly recently, it started under Mayor Walsh and has continued under Mayor Janey. This first, uh, generation home buyer support, I think is really important. It came from some of the money that was shifted over, uh, from police overtime spending. You know, I think we know, and obviously the report came out not that long ago, the color of wealth clearly showing that, you know, the average white family has, you know, more than a quarter, you know, a quarter million dollars in assets. And the average, uh, you know, black family has like less than $10. I think it was $8. So, you know, I think the more we can do to support first generation home buyers, it has the potential literally to change the trajectory of a family, their financial security. I think that's really important. Um, you know, I'd say right to counsel is really important. I'm an attorney myself.
Can you talk a little bit about that, right to counsel? So people understand what that means?
Yeah, you know, so Mayor Walsh puts some money into the, into the city budget. And it's just that, you know, the, the worst thing that can, I mean, I think a lot of folks on this know, so if I'm over explaining, let me know. But, you know, a judge is the only person that has the right to evict somebody. But folks don't know that. And, you know, landlords may take advantage of people's lack of knowledge. So the right to legal representation is really important because a lot of times, uh, people could stay in their house, or they might be able to have a lawyer, you know, negotiate a situation where they can stay, uh, you know, moving their, their rent payments around or so on and so forth. So I think something like that is really important. Um,
Yeah.
It'd be great if the state picked it up. Um, I know that, that the city, like I said, has, has acted on it and has put some money into the budget, which I think is great. Um, and then, you know, I think some of the new things we can talk about, and one of them is sort of in the idea phase, is can we build on city property? Um, either property that has, you know, no housing on it, or, you know, in, in Eggelston Square, they're talking about building housing on top of a library. I think something like that is really great and kind of out of the box.
That's the great for the library. So is he quiet in there?
Fair point. Fair point. Well, you know, um, but you know, and so there's that. And we can have a conversation about commercial real estate, right? Like, people are gonna be working from home for some degree. And whether they go to the office two days a week or three days a week, or they don't go at all. I mean, I think the demand is gonna go down on commercial real estate. I think maybe there's an opportunity, you know, these are buildings that have running water. They have electricity. They have elevators. Can we shift some of that over to the residential needs? I, I think it would be great to have more people living in the downtown.
Or how about, how about instead of investing in new housing? How about investing in the housing that we have so that it's sustainable and livable? You know, because somebody's living in an apartment, doesn't mean that they shouldn't be without the amenities of the luxury condos across the street from them. You know, I think a lot of times the answer is to, oh, build more affordable housing. But the affordable housing that's up right now, why aren't we putting money in there so that people can live better?
No, it's a great point. You know, I think kind of connected to that thought, you know, we have to talk about affordable housing, no doubt about it. And I, there's a lot of people in this race talking about it and I'm supportive of it. You know, one other thing on the housing that doesn't always get talked about, but I think is really important is the accessibility piece. And I think it's really important for our seniors and people with disabilities. You know, I know nationally, something like 1% of housing is accessible to people who use wheelchairs. 5% is accessible to people with mobility impairments. So, you know, the conversations I've had with people are agonizing when you hear them describe the difficulty of not just affording a place, but finding a place if they have accessibility needs, whether it's, you know, ramps or, uh, you know, bathrooms where they can turn around in their wheelchair. So, you know, that's something that I think I would bring to the table that I think, I think pretty much everybody's supportive of, but I just think, you know, having a connection to the disability community, I'm just a little bit more attuned to it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And I, I, I get it. I understand from the lens that you're talking about. Um, but I'm wondering if there's, if there's more of a need for the conversation to be, why aren't we investing in the schools that we have here now? Why aren't we thinking about, you know, it's one thing to build a new school or to get, you know, uh, more teachers and, and of color. But right now, you know, we don't have a con- we're not having a conversation of investing in those schools. There are some schools that look like shit. Like they absolutely are breaking down, brick by brick. But we're not having that conversation and I'm not sure why.
Well, and I think you bring on a great point. So when we rolled out the Mayor Walsh's tuition-free community college plan, you know, we sort of went from school to school to school and had incredible conversations with so many members of the school community, teachers, principals, you know, students, guidance counselors. And, you know, across the board, I, I was always impressed and left with such a positive feeling about the people within the buildings. But it was clear to your point that there is a vast, uh, difference from building to building in terms of the quality. And I think that, and I think that that, you know, oftentimes, you know, when folks are thinking about going to the school and, you know, they're doing tours to, to maybe apply, you know, to get into, to think about where they want to go, you know, that, that shapes people's opinions. You know, it shapes, I think, the way students feel about their school.
You know, absolutely. I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more. Yeah. Um, well, let me ask you this, because as it, it's, it's, some people may see it as brave as, as, um, you jumping in this race with all of these historical, you know, races being run. Um, I, of course, I'm never impressed by the historic part of any race or any ascension. Um, but what do you think you can bring to the table, um, with already sort of a, a group of, of a more diverse city council than it's ever been before? What, how is your voice going to be different?
Well, I, I, I'll kind of split it into two buckets. My sort of work experience and my lived experience, if that's okay. So I, I think from my work experience, you know, I've worked, I started working on issues of housing and homelessness. I worked on issues of transportation and public safety when I advised Governor Patrick. And I worked on mainly issues of jobs and education for Mayor Walsh. So as you know, all of these i- issues intersect uh, considerably, right? Like,
Yes.
Where you live in terms of housing is only as good as your connection to transportation or your connection to the schools or jobs that you want. So.
No, let me stop you right there, Alex, because I think, I think what you just said literally is why I would vote for somebody like you. That is exactly how we should be thinking. And nobody's having that conversation. So I thank you for saying that. I'm also not saying I'm endorsing, but I'm saying that is what, that is what would get my, that's what would get my, um, my ears up. Because I don't think people are having that conversation. So thank you for saying that.
No, and you know, I think I, I didn't realize it until I sort of, you know, was talking, you know, to folks and housing. And then I moved on to transportation and I sort of said to myself like, listen, these are literally linked. There's, you know, whether you live somewhere and that connects you, like I said, to your job or to your school or to your family or to parks, uh, is often like the difference between whether that housing is appropriate for you or not. Um, and so, you know, I think that's a work thing. And my work's brought me into every neighborhood. And as you know, as well as I do, you know, not every neighborhood is the same, you know? People that live there, the needs that they have are very different. Um, and I think just from the lived experience, I've already talked about. Um, and I think just from the lived experience, I've already talked about my listening. But you know, I think uh, we are in a time, I think, based on, you know, nationally, what happened over the past four years, but also the pandemic and, you know, throwing in sort of the historical inequities, like we need empathy more than we've ever needed. And I don't know of a group of people that have more empathy uh than people with disabilities. And I think, you know, finally, I'll just say, you know, we're gonna have to adapt as a society, you know? I think we're gonna have to change in so many ways. We already have, obviously. We went from an in-person to a virtual world. And now we're kind of coming back into, you know, what we're hoping will be, you know, better chapters in our lives. And so, you know, I, my life has always been about adapting. You know, I started being able to see that I didn't, that I couldn't see. So you know, people with disabilities, I think we talk a lot about the negative aspect of it. And you know, certainly it's, it's posed challenges in my life, but it's, you know, I think you talk to the average person with a disability. It's made them a stronger person simultaneously.
Well, listen, uh, you know, um, you know, having a disability certainly puts you in a certain class. Um, but you being a, a, a white man with a disability certainly puts you in different kind of protected classes. Um, you know, being a person of color with a disability, that's a, that's a separate conversation.
Sure.
Uh, but I think the voice is needed up there, because there aren't many people up there advocating for disability. Um, but also, I'm gonna, and I'm just gonna add a layer to that, is really advocating for senior citizens who now move into a special class of not being able to get around like they used to and, and having to rely on, on, on city services for the disa- this, the disabled um, to make that happen. So I think you're, I think you're right about that. Um, let me ask you this also, because as we wrap up, um, you know, right now, uh, the way a lot of residents see things is it's a mess up at City Hall. It's a mess. It was a mess before. It's a mess now. It's going to be a mess throughout the summer. How do you plan to change the narrative about how the city council works with the fifth floor?
Yeah, so you know, a, a couple of things. So you know, specifically with the fifth floor, like I think I, I would be able to go in with um a policymaking background. You know what I'm saying? Like I have helped launch or work on some really significant things. So I think I would be able to, to add policy proposals that I've, you know, not just worked on the beginning, but I've worked on the implementation and on the managing piece. And the managing piece is always really the hardest, you know? Um, so I think I could add that lens in the sense of like, if, if things are, you know, going okay, I could maybe give a nudge. Have you thought about changing this program in this direction? If things are going poorly, you know, I'm not gonna be the loudest person in the room. Like I'm gonna always work with people and, you know, call people out when there's a problem. But you know, my goal is to not, uh, like I said, we have enough divisiveness in Washington DC. I, I wanna have a collaborative, but you know, again, we do not have to be, we don't have to be disagreeable just to disagree. So I mean, that's always going to be my leadership style, but I think that's one thing that I could bring. Um, you know, I think another thing, finally, I would add is just um, city council is the closest link that people have uh in government. And so I think.
It's very constituent service-based.
I, and I, exactly. I think it's really important role of the city councillors to connect people to the services within the city. Because um, there are a lot of services within the city, whether, you know, it's in the Parks Department or whether it's in, you know, some of the things I've talked about, the Tuition Free Community College Plan. You know, there's a children's savings account program. But you know, government on any level doesn't always do a great job of marketing itself. So I think the role of a, of a really good city councillor is that they, they know from A to Z what, what exists in the city and they're connecting constituents to all these services whenever possible.
Yeah, yeah. So as we wrap up, why don't you just give like a closing statement and tell people where they can find you, how they can donate? Um, and, and what your next steps are.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So uh, this was great. I really appreciate it.
I hope you come back.
I'll come back whenever you want me to. Um, and so, you know, again, I'm a first-time candidate. This has been a wonderful experience. I've been given the privilege of listening, you know, to the stories of people for the past several months. And you know, it's given me such optimism for the future. You know, we face challenges, but it certainly has given me optimism for the future. Um, you know, I would say that I'm a first-time candidate, would welcome anybody who's interested in getting involved uh, to go to votealexgray.com, sign up, sign up to volunteer, sign up to get our emails. Uh, this is a people-driven campaign. Uh, whether you have an idea or you want to volunteer, we, we truly need you. So that's our website. Uh, it has all of our social media links up there. Uh, we've been in uh the Boston Globe, the Boston Herald, uh WBUR. Uh, we'd encourage folks, we just came out with a proposal in the Boston Herald about a week and a half ago uh, to put a special education seat, uh dedicated seat on the school committee for students in the special education community. So we're really proud of that. I think it's really important.
Congrats. That's great.
So yeah, we'd just welcome uh with any ideas or anybody's energy or time to our campaign, because I think um, we've got the, the potential to, to do some big things here in Boston over the next few years.
Well, listen, Alex, I, I certainly think you are a formidable candidate. And you know, I don't say that about everybody. So, um, and, and it's also you, you have, you have favor because you have hired my baby Dakota.
Yes.
I, I adore him. So um, I think that uh, I think you have a lot of really good ideas, fresh ideas, fresh perspective, which is needed up there. Uh, so I wish you all the luck uh in your, in your endeavor.
No.
Certainly a lot of people you gotta take out.
It, it's a crowded field, but you know, we're excited. We're, we can only control what we can control. So like you said, we've got Dakota and Sam and the team, they're doing incredible work and we're just working as hard as we can every day. That's all we can control.
Yeah, yeah. Well, all right. I am so happy that you came and we would love to have you back.
Thank you so much. We'll be happy to come back anytime.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, everybody. That concludes this week's episode of Politics and Paseco. I hope you enjoyed it. I thought it was very informative. We had both at-large city council uh candidates this, this week, and they were serious about their mission, but they were also serious about the issues. So I hope you come back next week. We're gonna have a very special guest besides myself. Shout out to my hairstylist who just hooked me up like an hour ago with my protective styling for the summer. Black girl magic right here, changing up things. Um, but in the meantime, I hope that you have a really good weekend and it's gonna be hot as hell on Sunday. So hot as hell on Sunday doesn't sound very good, but it's going to be hot. So I hope you get out there and put on some sunblock. Even brown girls like me have to wear sunblock. So enjoy your weekend. Bye.